Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Arlington School Committee Meeting of Thursday, January 25th, 2018. I'm going to begin by going around and pointing out the artwork from the Bracket Elementary School. So, over there in Part A, Board A, we have students in Grade Five who are introduced to industrial design and discuss several examples of the kinds of factory-made consumer products industrial designers help conceptualize and construct. Students were led through the multi-step process in which an idea must be carried before a product can be sold in stores to potential customers. Students were then assigned into design teams consisting of groups of four to five students. Each team was given a design assignment in which to either improve an existing product or invent a new product for potential purchase. Students had to arrive at a common agreement with their teammates on what the final product would be and were encouraged to discuss possible features and improvements as well as functional requirements for their products. Whimsy was allowed as well as creative exploration, but students were also encouraged to consider practical application of their ideas. After preliminary ideas were drawn out, conceptual sketches when drawn were drawn on graph paper and students were required to show a minimum of two views of their product including front view. Labeling of product features, characteristics, and special selling points were also required. B is Grade One, First Grade, drawing animal textures. Students in the First Grade have been learning how artists use the element of texture in their work. For this lesson, students examined how artists use a pattern and line to give the illusion of texture in a drawing, painting, or print that is actually smooth and surface textured. Students first looked at several photography examples which depicted many kinds of different textures and were asked to use their eyes to identify and describe the textures they saw. Then, First Graders were shown two examples of artworks featuring animals, Rhinoceros by Albrecht Dürer and Hen by Saul Steinberg. Students were led to notice that line variation, shapes, and patterns must be made to convey differences in hair length, scale size, or bumpy skin. Students were then asked to choose a photograph of an animal to draw using colored pencils and crayons and were required to draw the texture of that particular animal as they saw it in the photograph. Students were also instructed to get consideration of coloring, scale, and proportion. B is Grade Two, using collage to tell stories. Students in the Second Grade. Is that B?
I think that's it.
So, what did I do? Why did B's?
There's two Bs.
Oh, two Bs.
Or not two Bs.
Oh, there's two Bs.
That's the question.
Students in the Second Grade began this lesson with a visualization exercise to help them picture images in their minds with their eyes closed while listening to a reading of Aladdin and the African Magician from the ancient collection A Thousand and One Arabian Nights.
Oh, there's some really good ones.
After the story was read aloud, students were shown a collage inspired by the same story by artist Henri Matisse entitled Two, The Thousand and One Nights. Students were then asked to find shapes which depicted some of the key elements of the story including two magic lamps, lightning, and a cave. Students were led to notice how Matisse chose only a few shapes to represent what he felt were some of the important parts of the story while also incorporating other shapes and cutting techniques to create a visually interesting composition. Students were then instructed to create a collage based on a favorite story of their choosing. Fairy tales, ghost stories, myths, folklore, and chapter books were all among the many ideas selected for this lesson. Now, C, that's, alright. Fabulous Feast, this is kindergarten. Many artists use food as subject matter for their work, and food is often present at celebrations of all kinds. Kindergarten students have spent the past few months focused on the many aspects of celebration: masks and costumes, party drawings, and now feast collages. After discussing several examples of food-related artworks by Wayne Thibault and Klaus Oldenburg -- I can't believe they know these artists, but okay. Students listed their own favorite foods they think would be fun to bring to a feast for others to enjoy. Students were then instructed to create a feast by cutting out appropriate shapes and colors to represent various foods, imagining the colored paper background as their tabletop. Small details and texture could be added using oil pastels, and students were encouraged to include and think about other table-setting objects such as dishes, flatware, and drinking glasses. Okay, now we're Grade Three, Hybrid Creatures, D. Third Graders were first shown a slide of the Assyrian sculpture pictured here and asked to look at it carefully. After a few moments, students were asked to identify the different animals comprising the creature depicted. Students were quick to notice that there was a lion body, eagle wings, and a human head. This combination of animals can only be the famous mythical Sphinx. Many students are familiar with the Sphinx and were led through a discussion of its history within several ancient civilizations. Students were also led to notice that unlike lions, this Sphinx has five legs instead of the physiological four. I almost said psychological four. This is because depending on where the viewer stands in relation to the sculpture, either from the side or from the front, the sculpture will appear to have not only the correct number of legs but also appear to be walking from profile view. Students were then shown three contemporary illustrators' renderings of other famous mythical creatures, all of which were a hybrid combination of other animals: the chimera, the minotaur, and the pegasus. These creatures have famous stories told about them and continue to fascinate people. Students were then instructed to sketch an idea of a hybrid animal of their own design and to give the creature a name. Later, using their sketches as a reference point, students sculpted their creatures from clay, which was then kiln-fired and painted with watercolor paint. Some who finished early also wrote a short myth about their creature. And finally, Grade Four, Analogous Landscapes, right behind the crowd, the studio audience. After a previous discussion and exploration of the style and techniques of impressionist painting, Fourth Graders looked at Meadow of Giverny by Claude Monet -- I probably pronounced Giverny wrong -- which depicts the artist's understanding of using the full spectrum of the color wheel. Students were guided to notice the use of analogous colors, which are the colors next to one another on the color wheel. When colors are planned in this way in a painting, they create a more noticeable impact upon the viewer's eyes when looking at the painting. Students were also led to notice that all colors can be changed to make a stronger visual impact when painting. Students were then given photographs of various colorful landscapes to use as reference for their own paintings. Students were given a full spectrum of colors but were instructed to mix and modify their colors in order to use colors more inventively. They were also encouraged to use analogous colors to make their painting sparkle with light. There you have it. Alright, that is good stuff. Thanks very much to the Art Department for putting this up in the school committee room and for allowing us to put it on television. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is public participation, and I'm gonna start -- we have a lot of people that want to talk about kindergarten teaching assistance, and so I said to the group, if you kind of keep it, if it starts to get repetitive, you can kind of keep it concise, that would be helpful. Christina Falcone is first.
Excuse me, can I ask what station or channel you're televising on?
NBC. We're on, we're live all across the country. It's out of control. I don't know. This issue has gotten a lot of attention. No.
22.
It's, uh, it's, uh, public television in Arlington. What is it?
ACMI.
ACMI, Comcast.
22.
Comcast 22.
RCN 15 and Verizon 26.
Yeah, RCN, yeah, Verizon 26. Okay, there you go, yep. Alright.
Alright.
We couldn't sign the deal with ABC and that's the way it goes. Go ahead.
Alright, my name is Christina Falcone. I have three children, a First Grader, a Kindergartner at Stratton, and a three-year-old at Monomy. I'm here tonight to share with you the wonderful experiences my two sons have had in kindergarten at Stratton, as I'm sure is the case in other schools. Both my boys have grown both socially and academically in kindergarten. My two sons have both been very fortunate, have both have had full-time TAs in their class. Not only were they able to benefit from having extra hands in the classroom for math, literacy, and their specials, but they also got to feel comfortable and confident with another teacher in the class. This consistent extra adult in the classroom makes an enormous difference in day-to-day happenings and tasks at hand. I focus on consistence because last meeting, the superintendent mentioned the idea of sharing aides for math. Math is certainly important in the day, but it's not the, it's not just math that these wonderful TAs are providing assistance for. They're helping to manage the social part of kindergarten, making friends, learning how to be a friend, and offering support in small groups, knowing how to pair groups, which teachers work best, which students work best, and how they work best. In my experience, TAs and teachers are working together to make kindergarten's first year in school meaningful both academically and socially. I would also like to mention that these TAs are not making very much money, so to ask, do we really want to ask to overwork them and overschedule these TAs? Please make the right decision and allow every kindergarten class to have a TA.
Thank you, Christina. Megan Hinckley?
Thank you. My name is Megan Hinckley and I live on Henry Street. My husband and I moved to Arlington in 2012 primarily for the strong public education school system in town, ensuring that our soon-to-be son, who will enter kindergarten this fall, would have access to a positive public school experience was the key consideration to deciding where to purchase a home and put down roots. Over the past five years, we've been pleased by the reports about the schools that we've heard from our friends and our neighbors, but we also recognize that the town has experienced rapid growth and that we cannot take this high-quality educational experience that has historically been provided by Arlington for granted. So, we all know about the overcrowding in the, in the schools and especially in the lower levels, and I think we need to ask ourselves, how can one adult meet the individual academic needs of 20-plus children who are arriving to kindergarten with a diverse range of abilities, interests, and preparation? Kindergarten obviously is a critical time for students to gain the basic foundation of literacy, math, problem-solving, social skills, that they will need to be academically successful in the future years, but just as essential, this is the moment students can discover a love of learning, one that can serve them well as they navigate classrooms for the following 12 years of elementary and secondary education. Excuse me. It is essential that this passion for learning be nurtured and cultivated in kindergarten. And just as important as academic preparation, we have to think about safety, how one person can keep 25 students safe, five- and six-year-olds, how one adult can support the emotional needs of that many students, again, all of whom are coming from a back, a range of experiences and family situations. And I think it's impossible for any one person to fulfill all of those demands in a classroom every single day. Of course, we also want to consider the effect of this policy on teachers in the Arlington public school system. How do we maintain teacher morale and prevent burnout? And if we want to recruit and retain the teachers who are most excited and passionate about being in the classroom, we should provide them with the professional support they deserve. Kindergarten is our children's first experience of school. They deserve for it to be in a positive nurturing environment where they are supported, heard, and receive individual attention. They deserve to be given the tools to thrive. If Arlington wants to continue its reputation as a town that values children, families, and education, the school committee should consider making this investment in the town's future. So, thank you for this opportunity and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Ashley Dixon, do I have that right? Does anyone have the sheet?
My name is Ashley Dixon. I live on Magnolia Street. I have two sons, one will be entering Hardy this fall and another in a few years. We anticipate at least one or two more in the future who will make their way to Hardy. We're new to Arlington, but we are invested in, in doing our part to support public education in the, in our neighborhood and the town. The National Bureau of Economic Research published a paper a few years ago from a randomized study of early elementary classrooms, and the data from the project showed that kindergarten students in small classes are significantly more likely to attend college. The kids assigned to the higher-quality classrooms were, went on to have higher earnings at age 27 and better college attendance rates, which sounds crazy to think that a five-year-old's experience can have an effect there, but there really is a huge body of research that shows that what we do for kids at the young ages has a really critical long-term effect on their educational and their labor market success. I understand the overcrowding and, you know, it's not physically feasible to have these small class sizes, but, you know, why not take steps to improve that student-to-teacher ratio by hiring full-time aides for all of Arlington's kindergarten classrooms? You know, so the implication of the research is that if we have a fixed budget, obviously we do, we should allocate more resources to the younger students, even if that is at the cost of shifting resources down from some of the older students. A child's early elementary experience has, you know, effects on the likelihood to attend college and earnings at age 27, eventual homeownership, and things like retirement savings. Using a fraction of a percentage of the school's public, the public school's budget to hire the full-time aides is an efficient allocation of the resources, and the district will benefit, you know, downstream from the current investments in these young students. I read something by a kindergarten teacher who said that all kindergarten children are needy. I'm sure any of us who have been around a five-year-old would agree that, that five-year-olds, they, they don't succeed without some personal attention, and, and if one five-year-old in the classroom is receiving personal attention at a time when that's the only adult in the room, then that means 20-plus students are receiving zero attention. And, you know, if we look at the, the school district, K through 12, the students who will experience the biggest transition each September, you know, this, it's a huge life change for these kindergartners. Many of these children have been at preschool, you know, maybe three short mornings a week, you know, 15 students and three teachers, and, and now they come to a classroom with maybe 25 students and, and for part of the day, one teacher. And I understand, you know, there's a TA there for a part of the day. I understand that, you know, there will be some who will kind of float around in the afternoons, but I think it's, you know, often probably the second half of the day where children are more likely to misbehave or, or to, you know, have a meltdown or, you know, for the math curriculum like has been stated. And so, it's the second part of the day. I think it's interesting that that's when there often is just one teacher in the room. All kindergartners are needy. Let's give them the best start we can by improving the student-to-teacher ratio, again, by better allocating these resources, shifting down to, from the, the older students to provide for the full-time TAs in all kindergartens. By investing in these young children, I think the, the school district will benefit long-term. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Sawyer?
You say my name so much more nicely than I do, apparently. I say it in a British way and not an American way. I say Sarah Sawyer.
Sawyer, okay.
It's Sarah Sawyer. No, you were right, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And I'm here today to ask the committee to look at the proposal for full-time teaching assistance in kindergarten classrooms with a wide lens, to explore best practice and use current research to make your decisions about supporting this request. A request that was made by school principals is supported by the teachers' union is clearly seen as a priority by a growing group of well-informed parents and interested individuals, of which I think we have about 17 at my last count tonight. There's a growing body of research linking the success in kindergarten to success in future years. This research explores, explores class size, the importance of social and emotional competencies in a child's development, and the growing incidences of learning challenges and medical diagnoses. Implications are described not just for future classroom, success in future classroom environments, but include employment, engagement in criminal activity, substance use, and mental health. The information and evidence that is available to us about how important it is to get kindergarten right is mind-blowing. I ask the committee to explore this evidence and to ask the superintendent and her team for their research and evidence that they are using to formulate the current plan of two full-time TAs across three or four kindergarten classrooms. A study by Harvard in 2010 described kindergartners as young, impressionable, and vulnerable. I don't think anybody in this room would argue with the fact that children arriving into kindergarten are more and more complex with growing needs and with higher expectations being placed on them. I have statistics and some research, but I don't have time in my three minutes to share that with you. Children that are undiagnosed with anxiety, with sensory processing disorder, with non-verbal learning disabilities, with speech and language challenges, children who have experienced trauma before the age of four, which is at a 26% in the United States right now, are in kindergarten classrooms. Most of them do not have IEPs, do not have 504s, and need help to be successful. I'm a pediatric occupational therapist with 20 years' experience. I manage a clinic that supports over 500 children a week. I see children struggling in school. I see afraid parents. I speak to teachers that are eager, keen, and desperate to help these students. If they don't have the appropriate support now, they will fail. They will need IEPs, they will need 504s, they may need out-of-district placements. If we're gonna meet the national and state standards, if we wanna save thousands of dollars by providing early detection and intervention to our young children, and we are going to help our children to be successful, be happy, and to achieve their potential, we must make this change. We must provide full-time teaching assistance in all kindergarten classrooms. This makes sense financially, this makes sense for our children, this makes sense for our teachers, this makes sense for our community, and the alternative is not an option. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Weissman?
I'm gonna have to keep mine pretty short because I'm losing my voice, which I'm very sure might actually come out on the good side because a lot of what I'm gonna say has already been covered by many other folks, so I will skip to the couple of things that are unique. The thing that I, I come from a family of educators, and the number-one thing that they say makes their job easier is having less kids in the classroom, because the most number, each adult only has a certain capacity to interact with so many young people. And having the teaching assistants in our schools allows those adults and those teaching assistants to give the kids the attention that they need. Many of the kids who are showing up in school are doing for, so, for the first time in a public setting, they have difficulty following, or, you know, rules and direction, and having a second set, a second person to help deal with any problems that occur is very valuable. The, I was looking on the Department of Education's website, and, you know, I noticed that the Massachusetts limit to first kindergarten is 25 children, and I know that all throughout Arlington, we are pretty much against those limits, and we are working with assistance to help with that. The thing that I discovered that was new to me is that approximately about 20% of children in the, in the Dahlin Primary School are listed by the state as being high-needs, and another 14% are listed as having a disability, whether that be learning, or physical, or mental, or whatnot. So, the difficulty that the educators are presented with is compounded by the fact that the children need more help than is being able to be, to be given by just one adult to 25 children. So, I'm here to advocate tonight for full-time teaching assistance for these children in kindergarten, the benefits of which, you know, there's many, I've done more research on this than probably I could sum up here in three minutes, but Professor Cherry over at Harvard did an economics study, and the value of one good kindergarten teacher, he estimated at $320,000 a year, which underscores the importance of a good start towards an educational outcome. So, thank you for listening, and please consider full-time TAs.
Thank you. Liz Exton?
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Liz Exton. I live on Washington Street. My son will be a kindergartner at Stratton in the fall, and my daughter is two. We are looking forward to becoming a part of this much-loved community. I have been a kindergarten teacher for 15 years. I was very pleased to see at the budget presentation on January 11th that some kindergarten TAs have been added to the budget to support students during math in the afternoon. It is clear that you are committed to supporting kindergarten students' learning. However, I think it is important that kindergartners are provided with a consistent adult throughout the day. Consistency is key for young children. Sharing an adult across classrooms makes it difficult for the TA to really get to know the students, and it assumes that principals will be able to make this scheduling work. Having a TA to support kindergarten students during specials will enhance the educational value of a solid arts and physical education program. The specialists are well-versed in their disciplines, and the passion they share with students is invaluable, but they see these students for 40 minutes a week. The value of these programs will be improved with a TA to support students during specials. A second adult can help to facilitate engagement and make the learning more meaningful. Having taught kindergarten with and without a full-time aide, it is very clear to me how necessary a second adult is to kindergarten students' learning. Learning momentum is lost when the teacher has to stop a lesson to support a child who is crying about their work, or a child can't find the color marker they need. Mediating peer conflicts gets ignored or delayed, so the teacher can keep going with the planned activity for the rest of the class. A quiet, obedient student's learning needs may not be addressed because he isn't disruptive and doesn't demand the teacher, demand attention from the teacher. These are real issues in a kindergarten classroom. While I know the Arlington kindergarten teachers are strong, skilled teachers, in a classroom with only one adult, these problems cannot be addressed while simultaneously maintaining the attention of the rest of the class. The teacher needs to choose between supporting an individual student and maintaining the momentum of a lesson. Kindergarten success is a predictor of later school success. Let's give Arlington's kindergartners the right level of support to ensure their success. By my calculations, we're now talking about $120,000. I'd like to see the school committee and the district use this opportunity to fulfill this need for our youngest students and fund full-time TAs for every kindergarten classroom in Arlington. Let's get this done.
Thank you, Liz. Amy Martins?
I think all the points have probably been hit.
Okay. Leora?
Same.
Same? Okay. Myra Whiting?
Same.
Okay. Lauren Cosgrove?
I'm, I will just add, I-
You gotta come to the mic then. Just say your name and-
You know, I have these Cs out there.
Okay. Okay. My name is Lauren Cosgrove. I am in the buffer zone between Brackett and Dahlin. I live on Oakland Ave. I have a four-and-a-half-year-old daughter who will be entering kindergarten in the fall. I will divulge that I do not have a prepared statement at this time, but I am an occupational therapist. I have treated some pediatric populations, and I just want to add that I do think that having extra adults around to visualize the children throughout the day can only benefit, as somebody else mentioned, we have a lot of kids in the schools who have potentially undiagnosed mental health issues, sensory processing disorders, speech and language disorders, and I think that it's crucial that we have adults observing these children at every potential moment throughout the day in order to possibly identify children who would benefit from evaluations, from special needs services, and I think that it's imperative that we have these adults on staff to assist with that evaluation process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Karen LaCroix?
Hi, Cam. Like was, just appreciate the opportunity to be here and listen to everyone, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nualla McGowan?
Nualla, thank you. I just support every single thing that has been announced here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Erin Shanley?
Same for me, too.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Thanks very much, and thanks to everyone who presented tonight. Okay, we're now going to have a presentation on the Summer Fund Community Education Trip approvals. Come on up, Jen, introduce yourselves, and Jeff.
Good evening. I'm Jen Rothenberg, the Director of Arlington Community Education, and Jeff Bruno?
I teach physical education at Arlington High School, and more specifically, I teach backpacking and the Winter Survival Program at Arlington High.
We are here to seek approval for two applications. Jeff is on a very tight deadline this evening, so if we can talk about his trip first, then maybe he can leave and I can address any questions for the second one. So, I think you have most of the information in your packets. The trip that we are planning with Jeff is, this will be part of our Summer Fund Program, which again, as you know from our, our programming last year, is open to all students in and around Arlington. And so, this trip, I'm gonna let Jeff explain to you, but it is a one-week trip from July 7th to July 14th, and why don't you tell some of the-
Sure. Mr. Schlickman, before we go any further, I move that we take all remaining items off the table. We tabled, cursy table. Thank you, that's right. We did that beforehand. Motion, Mr. Schlickman?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is it an agenda thing?
Gotcha.
Go ahead, sorry, Jeff.
Okay, for this trip, will be taking place in Maine, northern Maine specifically. It's a combination of backpacking trip in the Bigelow Range and canoeing on Flagstaff Lake. The two are together, and the first three and a half days are hiking on the Bigelow Range. On the other side of the range, we have our canoes ready, and then we will be paddling back through the Flagstaff Lakes, back to where our van is parked, it's at a campground. The hike is roughly 15 to 17 miles long. It's pretty rugged, comes up to about four miles a day with campgrounds along the way. We have a canoe outfitter that'll meet us at the end of that, drop off our canoes, resupply, and then we'll paddle our way back with a few campgrounds along the way. The person co-leading the trip with me has done the trip in the past with high school students through another program and highly recommends it. She's worked with Arlington High, she's been a chaperone of a number of the outdoor trips, and feels like this would fit their abilities and their desires. A lot have been asking for a longer trip during the school year. I think the summer is a better place for that.
Any questions for the committee?
Okay, this is Community Ed.
Yes.
So, that any student of the appropriate grade level is eligible, not just an Arlington public school student?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. You did the, you're still doing Winter Survival?
We finished that two weekends ago.
How did it go?
Great. Uh, great. The weather was crazy. Um, the students, I don't know if they're crazy, maybe they are a little bit.
Mine was one of them.
Yeah. I think they did remarkably well. Really, every single bus ride home from that trip is, I just have to say magical, just hearing their voices telling the stories to each other, it's really the biggest reward of that trip for me personally.
It's an amazing thing, I hear all the reactions from kids. It's like, wow.
And I think that part of the reason that we approached Jeff initially was that there are so many students during the school year who don't have the opportunity to take the backpacking trips or the survival trips, and so we really wanted to bring these types of adventures to a broader group of kids and the summertime seemed like a good time to do that.
Have you done this particular location before?
I have not. Again, the person co-leading the trip, Shannon Zeke, she's not here tonight, she did it last summer in, in July.
Hope you see some moose.
Hope you see moose as well and maybe a mosquito.
Okay, well...
Kathy wanted to say something.
Thanks.
I, I, I want to wholeheartedly support this effort to have this trip in the summer. I, I have to say that we're one of the few school districts that even have this program. And I've heard from parents over the years and students that going on one of these trips has been one of the most impactful and positive experiences they've had in high school. So, I was so pleased to hear when Jeff Bruno was willing to, to do this in the summer, so thank you.
My pleasure.
All right. Any other, Kirsty?
Um, just a couple of questions. Um, it talks about, there's two experienced wilderness guides. Are you, you and Shannon the guy?
Yeah, co-leading is, yes.
And can you just talk a little bit about safety and how you attend to safety?
Okay, great. Um, well, first of all, any trip outside, large or small, has inherent risk. I'm well aware of that. Both Shannon and I are trained, we call it wilderness first, uh, first responders. It's about 40 hours of training every two years regarding backcountry rescue and medicine. About 15 years ago, was trained as a wilderness EMT, so we have a lot of knowledge with backcountry medicine and rescue. We do have a risk management plan with contacts and things like that. Cell phones work up there in case of emergencies. We have evacuation routes all planned out and checked out. Both of us, Shannon and I, have 15 years' experience leading trips that are both 30 days or longer in various parts of the country, including New England. We work well together and safety really is our first piece, okay? So, when we plan these, we, we both know that when students feel like they're safe, they're going to sort of take, you know, healthy risks and chances along the way. What other information do you need?
Um, that, that doesn't make...
Because I could talk for hours about safety.
Yeah, Bill?
Quick question.
Yeah.
Bears a problem?
Bears?
I realize...
Um, we do plan for animal, yes, we totally...
Is the preparation sufficient so they don't bother you or do they still try to get in?
Um, you know, they do come around, but with proper preparations from our part, our behavior, we will really, can minimize the problems. You can't really get rid of all of them. My only animal problem was on survival in my four years here. It was a, somebody walking their dog ate a student's food on their trip, so. So, wild animals, it's the domestic animal that could be more the problem.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, sounds like we need a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schlickman, second by Mr. Hayner. Any more discussion by anyone? All in...
Isn't, isn't it included in consent agenda?
I don't know, we're, we're...
We can do it if...
We can do it now.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? You're all set, go have fun.
Thank you. Enjoy though. Thanks.
And you have to get home.
And he's gonna go?
Yes, I know.
And so, the second application is for Tom Zirk's trip, which we did last year. It was an 11-day trip. It was wildly successful. We have had many conversations with Tom about the trip and based on feedback that we received, we have decided to shorten the trip. It was 11 days, we're making it eight this year. We're cutting out a kayaking portion of the trip. To be perfectly honest, the kids were wiped out. They were just exhausted. And so, we wanted, everybody loved this kayaking portion and they loved the outfit that we chose, and so we're just gonna do that piece of it. And so, the rest of the trip is really gonna remain the same, it's just a few days shorter. Part of, I think the other part of it is that we really wanted to try to bring the cost down for the excursion and try to make it more accessible, again, to more students. We're hoping this year to be able to use the school van for Tom's trip. Last year, we had to rent a van, which as you all probably know, is very costly. Jeff Bruno has access to the school van and will use that for his trip and has kindly offered the van for our second trip with Tom. So, we're hoping that that all works out. And so, essentially, Jeff's trip gets back on the 14th. We gas up and reload and send out a new group of younger students on the 15th. And I think you have the itinerary in here. I don't know if there are any other questions about the specifics of the trip.
Any questions by anyone? Okay, so we'll take a motion to approve that. Motion by Mr. Hayner, second by Mr. Schlickman. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, always good to see you.
Looking forward to summer.
Yeah. We all are. Um, okay, we're now gonna call up Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Jangor is sick tonight, so we're not going to talk about the discipline report at the high school, we're gonna talk about the AHS Program of Studies and Bill is more than qualified to talk about it. Before you wanna say something?
Well, some of the parents are still here. Mr. Denizio and I have been working on the budget and we are going to, a little bit later this evening, talk about ways that we, we could fund and make a recommendation to fund full-time TAs. It's, it's, it's a situation where you're gonna have to take it from something else, but we have been working to, to make this a possibility. So, we'll, we'll present it a little bit later, but I thought you might like to hear that before you left.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Bill, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hearing me on this. Uh, so I have the Program of Studies, I believe at this point everyone has received two, um, two pieces. The first one is updates and new courses and the other one is the Program of Studies itself. Uh, I won't bore everyone by reading the whole thing, but if you go through the updates, I do want to just talk quickly about some of the updates that we do have for next year. One is the Global Competency Program and Seal of Bilinguality, which was started a year and a half ago by former department chair of World Languages, Catherine Ritz. Uh, last year was a great success, but we created it after the Program of Studies, so we wanted to officially put it in the documentation this year. Um, we also have the Innovation and Design Certification Program, which is being created by Dr. Jangor in connection with Nathan Mjulsson, who is now overseeing our fabrication lab and maker space. We also have a series of new courses, which we're very excited about offering. Um, you can see that list actually spans quite a few of the departments. We are trying to expand our electives for next year. Um, one area we have been struggling in is, obviously, we have our core classes, but it is keeping students invested in their education when they're not in the core classes. So, we want to offer them as many electives as possible. I don't know if there's any specific questions about any of the new additions, either of courses or of the certifications?
Oh, I actually have a point, but I also wanted to point out that we don't actually have the Program of Studies. We have two versions of the updates in our, in NOVUS.
Somehow, yeah.
Yeah, we just need to throw it into the Program of Studies in NOVUS.
Okay.
Yeah, in the future, yeah.
Good, okay, thank you.
But, but I just wanted to make a point, which is that I'm very excited about all the additions to the electives at the high school that's happened in the last few years. I have a junior now, I know the big frustration is they don't have them in elective periods, so there's so much more that they want to take than they have availability. And I really appreciate the sort of move to doing more of these half-year classes, which gives the students the opportunity to sort of dabble a little bit more, which is, I, I think, just a welcome sort of addition.
Yeah, we've been very excited about that, especially opening it up to sophomores. So, now sophomores can choose to take a half-year course opposite their PE, so that has broadened the elective choices, giving them a little more opportunity. If you're familiar with the way the high school works, freshman year, it's pretty lockstep as to what courses you're gonna take. Sophomore year, you have more elective choices. By the time you're a senior, you have a pretty broad range of electives. So, we like to teach the students about the Program of Studies, the courses they can choose, and really make them in charge of their own education as they proceed through the school.
Yeah, sorry, I, I, so I also have an eighth grader and she came back from visiting the high school and she was most excited about all these electives and I sort of had to break the news that like she would have to sort of wait a little bit, but you know, it's, it's good. Um, but yeah, no, it's just, it's a, it's a welcome development that I've, I've seen. The direction that we're moving in is really good.
Thank you, we're very excited about it.
Morning eats, breakfast and brunch, aside from being big. I, I think this is an exciting concept, especially the way it's laid out and everything. Will that be part of the school day or prior to the school day starts?
It'll be during the school day. Um, our goal is to actually set it up for first period.
Okay. And going down to the courses that are not gonna happen, awful lot of language courses. Is that because of participation?
Um, yes. We had created those courses about a year and a half ago. Uh, the idea was to see if there was interest in conversational classes. Because they were 1.25 credits and only offered twice a week, it's very difficult to fit those into schedules as well as to staff them because we've seen a huge growth in our foreign language department in terms of student desire to learn language. So, when you have a choice of taking a full year of French or taking French conversation...
I, I assume the conversation will be an integral part of the regular foreign language program?
That is the other piece of it.
Good, thank you.
Of course.
Paul?
I'm thrilled by some of these electives in here. I'm just sort of curious, are you, what is the change in the music program? Is this something substantive, a new direction, or are you just tweaking? Because it's tough to see because I don't have the, the current Program of Studies with me.
No, of course. Um, one of the pieces that we've been working on, we've brought on Bill Papazisas, who's the department chair for Performing Arts. And we're floating out the idea of more collaboration between the different genres of performing arts. For instance, there'll be a musical theater class, which combines the choir and the drama courses. Uh, we also now have a course, uh, we're gonna float out a course that is chorus and orchestra to combine those two. Um, the thought there is to give students more of a wider experience in the performing arts. And we're hoping that will continue to grow.
Uh, my wife has told me that music theory is something that should be taught more and isn't done well in K to 12, she's the teacher university and, uh, it, I'm sure she'll be thrilled to know that Arlington High is upping its game there as well.
We have actually floated that out a few times with our Coursera classes, the MOOC, massive online courses. John D. Tomaso has actually taught two classes and they've been wildly popular. So, we're hoping those will continue to grow and that this will branch from that.
Great, thanks.
So, just related to the Program of Studies, I hear a lot about the Governor's Early College Program and don't know that much about it. Is that something that Arlington, the Governor's Early College Program? Is that something that Arlington has taken a look at at all? Maybe it's more...
It's a rather fair question.
Sure.
Well, the, with the dual enrollment, it's, it, the Governor's, um, the Governor's proposal has more to do with students actually being enro, literally enrolled in two different institutions at the same time. Well, in our dual enrollment courses, they're not really enrolled in that they get college credit. And that's something that we have courses in the high school for, but also, I think that in some cases, I'm not sure how many of the Coursera courses allow that possibility as well.
Well, the other piece is we do have a connection right now with Syracuse University. They're called SUPA. Syracuse, basically what happens is our teachers go to Syracuse University, they are trained, and when they return here, they can teach their courses and offer Syracuse credit. Uh, unlike an AP course, they don't have to take an exam, the students, they automatically receive the Syracuse credit if they receive a passing score of the course. Uh, I think currently we have that in government policy, economics, uh, which actually, there's two versions of the economics class and, um, there was one other, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we have been exploring that with the Social Studies Department.
Okay, thanks.
Two quick questions. First, what's the current minimum number of students needed to run a course?
Um, for a standard course, we try to aim for 17 to 18 students. That being said, there are some specialty courses that we do run with a smaller group of students, especially around special ed or English language learners.
Okay. And the second question is, I noticed that economics class was dropped and one was added and I'm wondering if you can talk about what, what the difference is?
Um, just give me one second. Introduction to Economics.
Economics for Life was added and Intro to Economics, I think, was dropped.
Um, I basically, I, I believe it was just the curriculum itself changed sufficiently that they felt that a new course title would fulfill that needs. The Intro to Economics is really covered when we run the economics course itself, and so the idea was to expand the economics in another area.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. No more questions, any comments? Okay, so tonight we are approving these changes. A motion to approve the changes is presented by the decisions principal?
So moved.
Motion by Jennifer, Dr. Seuss, second by Mr. Hayner. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Bill, thanks for coming in. There is no discipline report tonight because of the absence?
We're gonna reschedule it.
We're gonna reschedule it, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna reschedule for next meeting. Okay, we now begin the discussion on the FY19 budget right at 7:30 PM, 7:31, 2:00 PM. We're pretty much on schedule. Okay. And I also didn't point out, Jason Levy, the President of the Arlington Education Association is here. Jason, always good to see you. Good to see you. Okay. How are we doing this?
Um, just setting up.
John's gonna set up? Okay.
Right. Well...
beginning stages and they're on here, but I won't go through them, I'll flip through them quick. Nothing new to really talk about with those. But at and after our last meeting, we were able to get some feedback from the school committee, from parents, and then after from the leadership team on what the feeling was about the initial drafts, the budget and what, what should be in and what, what could we be, what could we get in?
The screens are not communicating. Remind us, please.
You need somebody from the world language.
John, do you want me to have printed copies? People are... Send it, send it... If you send it to Rob or Rod, they can just go and think about owing anybody.
Money's going out of the table. Here we go.
Should I stick my finger up my mouth?
Yeah, go ahead, right there.
Bill, thank God you're here.
Wow. That's weird.
The college education paid off, huh, Bill?
Oh, yeah.
Just tap the, the arrow down below, that little arrow on the side, in the middle. The college education paid off, huh, Bill?
Oh, yes.
Just tap the, the arrow down below, that little arrow on the side, in the middle. There you go.
Bill, if you could remain for the rest of the meeting to help us with any technical issue, we'd appreciate it.
Started with the same slides we had last time, one month ago, just a bunch of overview, different categories, breakdown of what, what made up the initial draft budget of, of those, showed the amount that we had available after fixed and mandated and Gibbs. Just listed out what made up the contractual salary costs and what made up placeholders we had for fixed and mandated costs.
Right.
That left what the initial budget was for additions, and we listed them out by level. It was all personnel. Let's see. And then we, like I said, we were able to get some feedback from, from parents, from the school committee, from the leadership team. And this is kind of what's not included and what are our unmet needs. This is just a, just a list of some of the, the list is much, much longer than this, but this is the stuff that rose to the top of, of what we've identified of, you know, were the priorities. And you can see, they're not in really in priority order, they're just kind of listed. But you can see that the, what we heard from the school committee and from parents was the kindergarten TAs, there's a cost on there for each of them, there's, next is a couple of, of reserve teachers for the K to five sections. You may remember that there are two that we had in our initial draft, and the more we talk about it, the more scared we get. So those are on the list. The high school ask was in the around eight FTE for class size, and after going, after much deliberation, they thought that they could probably leave with 5.4. What actually came in the initial draft budget was five FTEs, and with the learning area to be decided after, you know, class selection. And really, the more we talked, they really do need 5.4, you know, so that's on the list of, of things we're thinking about. So that's staffing, what rose to the top. Operations, supplies and materials. There's, you know, just, just a few of the things we're talking about. There, there's nothing in the budget for inflationary factor for supplies and materials. And we've kind of just carried forward the budgets over the last few years. This, this really is only like 1% of the building-based supplies and materials. But as you know, if we keep carrying over the same number and stuff gets a little bit more expensive, we get less and less of it. Next is increase in operational expense. We did put money in for Gibbs, for operations and utilities. This number is, is, would, would make up about a 3% increase in, in supplies and services, you know, and 50%, I mean, 50,000 in utilities. I've been meeting with Ken Pruitt regularly, and we think we're going to be fine this year, and, but the more he looks and digs deeper into the numbers, he, he feels like we maybe, we need another 50 for next year to be where we need to be. We've talked about, at the leadership team, the course reimbursement total in the budget is only $15,000. Another 20 would get us to what the recent experience has been for course reimbursements. So that's on the list. The next is curriculum materials and textbooks. This is district-wide, this is for all learning areas. This number is ba, is beyond what is already in the budget, the $225,000 that's already in the budget, that all of the directors, principals, and what, you know, put their priority list together, and they meet with Rod, and they, they figure out what are the priorities are for the year. There was about 120 in the next group of, that were tier-one priorities, but didn't make it within the 220. And those were grade-five reading materials to, to make it consistent with the other grades, replace outdated texts and materials for middle school and high school in the science area, and replace an outdated text in social studies in grade 10. The last item is library books for Gibbs. We, it's, it's something that isn't, isn't on our list, and working different angles on how we can do it, but just, the $50,000 placeholder is, is consistent with what was spent for Thompson to outfit the library. Like I said, there is many beyond this, but these are the, the, you know, ones that rose to the top. So, so what can we do, or what adjustments can we make in order to, to afford some of this stuff? If I go back to the fixed and mandate costs, these were placeholders that we're still working through. The, the bottom two, translations, interpretations, that, that number seems to be pretty good as a start for us. We really, it's really been ramping up over the last few years, and, and we don't have anything now, so we, we don't feel like we could go much lower than that. The custodian add-back is, is part of a contract already, so there's not much we can do there. The next two up, the services and transportation, we, we think maybe the transportation could come down a little, but based on the more we've worked on the services piece, that needs to probably come up a little, those will probably net each other out. And then really, the main area we've been working hardest on is in out-of-district tuitions. As you see, we had placeholder of about $600,000. So for, we've worked out on out-of-district tuitions, and we think there may be a potential adjustment of about $50,000. We could, we could lower that, and here's why. We've, we've taken the current estimated tuition costs for this year, just over 8 million. Projected tuition costs for next year, so, so Allison has really done a lot of work with her, with her team to take out anybody that's aging out, anybody that's going to graduate, and anybody that is moving out. So that, you know, that, that takes a lot off of there, but then we also want to make sure we capture some of the watch list, our tier-one watch list and tier-two watch list, that these are the students that are currently in our district or, or in an evaluation that may present with, with the need to be an outplacement. So you can see the year-over-year cost for those would be $326,000. We've, we have a placeholder of 600, so that would be good news. We do have the, the next set down just adds back the circuit breaker, so we may remember that we used $300 more in circuit breaker this year than we got funded last year in our, in our original budget. When the final numbers came in, it was actually only 224,000. Actually, let me go to the next slide. Last year's circuit breaker was 1818, 344. That was the actual, because they adjusted the final reimbursement rate on the last payment, as they do quite often. We had budgeted for this year to use just over 2 million, so the, the net effect of that was we used 224,000 more than what we were getting. So this year, in the budget that's, as it's presented, or as it's being worked on, rather, is the circuit breaker reimbursement for this year, actual, which is what our recommendation is to use that next year, is almost 2.1 million. We would, we would recommend that we decrease that by the amount that we're, to make up for last year and fund almost 1.9 million. I don't know why those slides are in reverse order, but, so as you can see, the total year-over-year making up for the circuit breaker would be 550,000, you know, potential savings there of about 50,000. So there's more work to do on this, and there's more work to look at other areas that we're, we're doing, but these are sort of the highlights and the, and where we are right now.
Len? So on the, on the circuit breaker, because that was originally my proposal, we had recommended in the proposal I presented, you weren't here, to, you know, we were going to borrow $300,000, we would pay that back over three years, not in one lump sum, this year. So it's only 224 now, so maybe you want to still pay back 100 and get ahead of ourselves, I don't know. But the intent was not to pay it all back in the first year. So I, I don't know if anybody else disagrees with that, but the idea is, you know, we had, if you look at our circuit breaker reimbursements, we had a dip this last year.
Yep.
And we wanted to make up for that dip. But going forward, we're going to be steady. So instead of giving, making ourselves take another dip, we can do it lower, and it would still be steady.
The only issue is, is that, that now has become another political issue, that the circuit breaker rate is probably going to be 65% this year. So there's no guarantee with the state budgets and the projection in terms of federal money's not coming in.
Yeah, well, the governor's...
That's going to happen.
The governor's budget proposed a $10 million increase in circuit breaker for next year. So we can be pretty sure that it's going to stay, set steady at 65% at least.
At 65, right. When we were doing this before, we were, we were at 72%.
So the, the number that's, that's there now, the, for the, just below 2.1 is the actual posted 65% number.
Right.
So providing it doesn't go down, we can adjust that to 1.8 million we're using for, for next year up and increase that available.
Is that, are you satisfied? Is that...
That's the proposal, yeah. That would be my suggestion, yeah. That would be in keeping with what we had presented last year.
So you think three years, would this be year one?
This would be year one. FY19 would be year, year one.
So be 100,000 a year one.
I mean, you could, since, since we ended, we only ended up borrowing 220 instead of 300, that, that's a choice that, that I defer to you. Do you divide it by, you know, $75,000 in three years? Or do you, do you get ahead of yourself, 100, 100, and then you have 24 left?
Okay. So district has discretion?
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I'm very happy for my colleague's point here. Mr. Carden was really the leader in terms of making that smoothing motion on the circuit breaker. And, and if we committed ourselves to doing the payback over three years and we only borrowed 224,000, seems reasonable to me to pay it back in three $75,000 increments, which gives us another 100 and, you know, 70, $150,000 of additional revenue we can bring into this year's budget over, over the current projection.
Any other questions for the CFO?
Need a motion?
Sorry.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, go ahead. More question. So the other, other thing, John, is with the curriculum materials, two years ago, we had spent 250,000 on curriculum materials out of those reserve funds. In last year's budget, that got added into the base. Was supposed to have gotten added into the base. I don't know where it went, and I know you're transitioning.
Yep.
But that was an, an increase that we had made. It was originally going to be a one-time increase. Last year, we talked about it, we said, we need to, we, we need to keep that going forward. So I'm surprised to hear there's only 225,000 for curriculum materials, because it, we added 250 on to what used to be there. I don't know what used to be there, maybe it was 100, maybe it was, I don't know. So, so it's not there, it's not there, but I'm a little bit confused about what happened with that.
So currently, the way it stands, there is very little in the operating budget, and the rest is paid for from the annual revenue used from revolving accounts. So if that's supposed to be in the operating budget, then we need to move something else into the revolving accounts.
Yeah, no, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't matter where it comes from, but the total amount seems short. It should at least be 250, assuming we were spending zero before we made that change. But we couldn't have been submitting zero before we made that change. I don't know what we were spending before we made that change.
Okay, so we're not, we're not taking a vote on the budget tonight, correct? So why don't, could you do some research on that?
Yeah, we'll do some historical research.
And so, yeah, okay. You know, one point, Arlington's, according to the governor's budget, is going to get 241,000 more in chapter 70 money, and so, well, so I think the long-range planning committee should discuss this at its next meeting. So I just, I want to talk about, I don't, who's on long-range plan? It's Len, Kersey, Jennifer. So advocate, yeah.
I'd just like to ask them to also be cognizant, chapter 70 money does not come directly to us.
I know, yeah.
No, I just, I want to, we know it, I just want it out there, so it's, I want everybody to know, it's just not an automatic that we're getting this, this extra money. We have to work for it.
Yeah, I, I haven't had the chance to check, but my suspicion is that that is below the amount that's already built into the plan, because we were, because we were expecting, the town was expecting an increase based on the increased number of students we have, and it's really not that much.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I mean, I just, I would just say that this is going to...
Good news.
It's good news. It should be discussed at the long-range planning committee.
Yeah, we will.
And you should, yeah, advocate for all of it, no, right now. When's the next long-range planning committee?
I don't think it was scheduled.
No, it's going to, it's going to be after the governor's budget, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we haven't scheduled it.
Okay, well, okay. So I, I just, I, I just think we should bear that in mind, so we don't forget. Okay? All right, well, have at it. Okay. Anything else on the budget at this point in time? And Kersey, what's, like, the plan, what's coming up on the budget, what's on the schedule? Just so you can remind us. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I just want to make sure everyone's...
I don't, we'll have the superintendent's budget very soon. I don't have my calendar right in front of me, but I can pull it up.
May I ask what's on the budget?
Yeah.
So trying to work backwards, having it be my first year, we're, we're working diligently on the book that I, I just recently found out goes out to the, to the printer, and I'm trying to find out what actually, when it actually goes and what goes to the printer, because I think for the eighth is the superintendent's, the first look at the superintendent's detailed budget.
Is it?
And thinking if we were needed to have materials to people the Friday before, could those materials be electronic? And not, because I'm assuming there's going to be some changes, we're going to have a budget subcommittee meeting either before that and right after that, where we can take in some feedback, be able to make changes before anything actually goes to the printer. And we would be willing to print sections of that ourselves in order to only have to send one document.
I don't think we need anything printed until we go to the finance committee.
Yeah, I think finance committee is the one who really likes the printing.
So you can send us information electronically for them. So we're going to, so on February 8th, we're going to get the preliminary, we're going to get the superintendent's budget.
February 1st. Yeah. We will get it electronically February 1st, so we can discuss it, review it and discuss it.
February 2nd is what we had on the calendar.
February 2nd.
Yeah. That's the Friday, I think that's...
Right. Okay, so our, but our meeting is, where we're going to discuss it is February 8th. Yeah. Okay. So February 8th, we discussed the first version of, sorry, we're talking about the preliminary budget, the superintendent, and on February 22nd, no, February...
We don't have another, okay, so on, we have a meeting on February 8th, where we talk about the superintendent's budget. On March 1st, we have the budget hearing, and we have any additional, it's not on our calendar, but any additional changes or anything we want to make are, can be made then. And then on the 15th, we have our final vote on the budget, and we approve what goes to FinCom. So when we're talking the budget book, that's what goes to FinCom, it's not...
So we don't have to worry about that until...
That's what goes to the printer.
Right.
That's what goes to the printer.
Kathy?
Well, we've done the last couple of times, and I, I'm glad to hear that you're willing to do this, because that was actually an issue. We did do the books, and you had them the day we actually did the presentation, but when there were changes, we had to just put addendums in, and at the same time, we gave the finance committee the budget book early on. And so we would need to notify the finance committee, they're not going to get it this year as early as they have in the past. They were okay with having the superintendent's budget and then addendums presented to them after your vote. So what we're saying right now is different than we've done the finance committee in the last couple of years. And that, it's, it's fine, and we can send then the electronic version too.
When is our meeting with them?
March 21st.
I mean, for them, I would say you probably have to get it a month before. They're going to want a good month with the bu, book. That's a lot.
Well, I mean, but we're approving on the 15th, so...
Well, but we've...
Yeah, in the past, in the, Dr. Boyd is right, in the past, the superintendent's budget, which is coming before us on February 2nd, has also been sent to the finance committee.
Right.
Under, with the understanding that it's just the superintendent's budget, not the official budget.
Okay, so...
You could do it electronically, we can talk to Mr. Tosti about that possibility.
Yeah. I mean, if they're willing to get it electronically and they can print it themselves as well.
All right. Let's keep moving. Do you, do you have a monthly financial report? Are you...
Yes. Yeah, I'm sitting here.
So, changes for this month, I mean, they seem to be pretty much the same every month, but the changes for this month was on the recommendation at our last meeting was to, for grants and revolving accounts, don't just report what had been spent to date, project them, project them out, which is a little bit easier, because we almost always spend all of the revolving... which is a little bit easier, because we almost always spend all of the revolving accounts and grants may spill into the following summer, but that's still considered the same year for most of the grants. For the general fund budget, we did a little bit, you know, started tweaking it a little bit, trying to get to, our goal was to, at the last meeting, talked about, for the period ending, the end of February, to start projecting out all the object codes to what we think they're gonna be at the end of the year. And the way we'll do that is, you know, based on some historical spending over that period, based on what we've spent, and, you know, the business office will do some asking around. We will, we continue to cover payroll, which is great, and it's definitely great. Sometimes it has its challenges with, well, employees that are either on a leave or have left, but still get one more paycheck, and the new person has started. It happens a lot with TAs. So, that can fluctuate a little bit, and we'll, as we get closer to the end of the year, that will happen less and less. We've been able to fine tune the substitute number a little bit more. I think we're getting a lot closer on that. We sort of are guessing at the beginning of the year, and we'll be able to fine tune that even more at the end of, for the next report, for the, for through the end of January, we'll be halfway through the year, so we will, you know, get even closer and then really start tightening it up for the report beginning February. So, the general fund report and the all-in report sort of just match, because, in the bottom line, because we're projecting spending out all the grants and revolving accounts, which I think is accurate. We do plan on, we do have plans to spend all of those dollars, and we do plan to collect all of those dollars. Some of the revolving accounts, we've collected a little more than what we've budgeted. So, as we go on, if it seems like we would spend more than we budgeted, then we'll just point that out in the report. That's it.
Questions? Anybody? Len?
So, the only thing that concerned me was the foreign visa revenue. The, you're still projecting to collect 226,000. Is that really a projection? Because it ties to what was in the budget. Is that a realistic projection, or?
Yeah, and I think part of it is because of the timing of posting of revenues, especially in the revolving accounts is, and especially with wire transfers, they come in, get batched, and they don't actually post until they reconcile for that month. So, if they're a little bit behind, there can be big dollars that are still waiting to be, waiting to hit our account. But I can-
It looks like for the year, we'll collect, we'll hit that 350 figure for foreign?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, John. We move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. I first want to just respond to a request, I think with Mr. Carden that requested it, having a comparison of the Odison and the Gibbs staffing. And we're not ready, we can't do that right yet. The reason why is that we still are working on the Gibbs schedule. This has proved to be very challenging. It's challenging because we're trying to do a lot with limited staff, is basically what's going on. And, you know, so, we have a budget, and we have obviously an operating budget for the whole district, as well as for Gibbs. And we're trying to create project blocks in these cycles, and that has literally domino effects through the whole part of it. The other major block, and this is also true at Odison, and that's when we tried to schedule band orchestra chorus at the same time. It's like putting a wedge into a schedule. So, it's been more, it's been more challenging, and, but our hope is, and really our need is, to have something more definitive in the next two weeks, so that we can, there's a lot of other things that are sort of waiting for decisions with that. But as soon as we can, we will, and do things. I think it was where the genesis of the question had to do with why three teachers were needed at 7th grade for a cluster than just adding two, in terms of where people were moving.
John?
I just want to ask if we have plans for another presentation? I know parents are anxious to hear about curriculum changes especially, so what is gonna be different in the new, in the Gibbs than was going on at Odison in 6th grade, and haven't gotten that yet, so.
Correct. And again, it's because of this, the plan is actually to have what we have in the 6th grade curriculum now.
Or-
But added to that, project block, added to that, the morning meetings for responsive classrooms. So, it's basically having advisory to start the day.
Actually, I didn't mean content, but more sort of how the approach is gonna be different.
How the what?
How the approach to teaching and learning is gonna be different, yeah.
That is probably easier right now to talk about, because I've been doing a lot of meetings about this. There's right now a leadership team made up of faculty that are going to be part of the 6th grade team next year. And that, they have a very focused agenda going out, and that is certainly one of the, one of the issues, for sure. The 6th grade in general, really, in many of the clusters, does some very innovative work, and this will only continue as we move forward. So, yes, what we're going to have first is a Gibbs advisory committee. We have a number of things that are building up in terms of topics. And then, I think that probably by late February, early March, we'll schedule another parent forum. We want to do that, want to be able to give more information about bus schedules at that time. So, that's being worked on simultaneously. And then, we'll have yet another one much later in the spring, sort of to, when we have even more details about the next year. But I would say early March is probably a more realistic target, given the work that's still necessary to be done. While we all knew opening a new school would be challenging, I think we underestimated the challenges. There become, there are many. There have been many challenges, as Mr. Levy knows, for sure. But the thing that I will say is the level of enthusiasm and willingness to work on this has been quite extraordinary. A lot of compliments to our, to our teachers and to Ms. Steve Francisco. She's been terrific. All right. So, usually, we always have building project updates, and in this case, let me just finish up with Gibbs, that the, in terms of the construction, we're going along just fine. One of the things we've done in the last couple of weeks is we've been working with traffic advisory committee, and also Cory Roto from the police department in terms of safety. And we've done some adjustments to the site plan to respond to what we think we're, to have better safety features to the site for drop off of buses and drop, and drop off of students. So, that is being worked on, and I think probably the permanent town building will hear more about that.
They basically talked about, the two streets that the buses come in on are one-way, and the way they're arranged, you'd be getting off into traffic as opposed to next to the school. So, they're looking at the idea of having the bus come into the existing parking lot, drop off, and do a curb cut on the main door.
That's exactly right. We're gonna, we're not gonna have the buses drop off on Tufts. And the plan was never to have them drop off in Foster. For one thing, Foster is 10 feet less wide, narrower than Tufts. So, now, the plan will be to have the buses come into the parking lot, which I think is a much safer way of doing it. But that meant we had to change the way that there was an exit. Before, there was no exit out of the parking lot. It was just one entrance, exit, same spot. So, that, and then we also, because of the narrowness of Foster, we've had to do a cut.
Curb cut.
A curb cut up to the sidewalk, yeah.
The idea is for four, they're talking about four-cone lane for drop-offs, parent drop-off and pickups.
Yeah, and DPW has been very helpful in this whole thing. It's really been quite a good team effort to get this figured out. But these are the kinds of things that happen when you're in a construction project, that there are things that you thought worked, but then the more you get more thought to it, more study to it, you find that they don't, and you have to readjust. But it's really a great team effort on this. I have to, many compliments to everybody. So, that's about it on Gibbs at the moment. The high school project, we are in, we're in the visioning part of the project. We have a group of about 60, 70 people, I think the exact number is probably more like 65 people, that includes students, teachers, administrators, community members, members of the building committee, members of the school committee, town officials, that are working together over 12 hours to create the educational vision of the high school, because the plan that we will eventually present to MSBA will incorporate the vision into space requirements. So, you know, for example, when you saw the program of studies tonight, one of the things you saw was advanced robotics. We don't have a robotics lab. So, and those are the kinds of things that, it's also about how you want to be teaching to the future, but also what you want to be teaching into the future. So, it's all of that. Now, we want to be able to expand this kind of visioning to the whole community and invite people on February 7th to another community forum. And we'll put, we'll, we're gonna actually get an announcement out on Monday to remind people about this. But it's another opportunity for people to participate in the visioning process for the educational plan. We have to, we have to really, after all of this in February, we have to really focus on getting the plan written. The plan will be presented to the school committee, as well as to the building committee. But the role of the school committee in this is that you need to approve it before it goes to MSBA. The building committee does not, but nonetheless, they're still involved in it.
If I may, there were, all the departments, all the stakeholders within the education part had a slide of what they're looking for, and think, one of the things that stuck out to me were breakout spaces. And in walking through the school, for different reasons, constantly seeing the high school students sitting in the hallway, sitting on the floors, leaning against the walls. And I said to a group today, I said, I know you won't be affected, but there's gonna be good places for the breakouts. And they said, gee, we're gonna miss it. I said, well, you can come back and teach in that. Two of them said, yeah, that's a good idea. So, maybe we got two future teachers coming. But that was a prevalent thing to come out, and I think it's really valuable to have these breakout spots for teachers to allow students to go out, work independently, but still being supervised at the same time.
I'm not sure if you said this, but just to, on March 1st, we're gonna hear the visioning, the Arlington High School vision statement, or vision presentation, and then on March 15th, we vote on it. Is that the, what's the timeline?
Yes, it's-
It's the goal.
So, we vote on it as a committee on March 15th. We hear it on March 1st, like a first read. That's the timeline.
March. So, this is before-
It's been moved back a little bit, because what HMFH has to present, in addition to the educational plan, they also have to present to MSBA the space summary. So, if we say we needed to have, currently, we have four art rooms. Now, whether that's gonna be sufficient for an enrollment growth of 400 students remains to be, you know, as part of the whole discussion that will go on over the next, the next few months and next year. So, in order to, you still have to have, you have to have the educational plan in order for the architect to develop the space needs. And all of this has to be delivered to MSBA in mid-April. So, we're on a very fast, condensed track right now to get everything complete.
At the next, I'm sorry to interrupt, at the next building committee meeting on February 6th, we're gonna have a detailed schedule of decision points by the building committee and by the school committee. But the two dates for the school committee, or the date for the school committee on, is April, I'm sorry, is March 15th. And we just felt it's necessary to have a first read on March 1st. So, there's time to ask questions, get more information. Go ahead. Sorry, Jennifer.
Oh, I just wanted to ask, so I know, I was just going back through the schedule. So, the third visioning committee meeting is February 15th, it's a very short turnaround. Is March 1st the first time that the public would also be seeing that via the school committee meeting, or is there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, March 1st is the first time they'd see it? And if, say, the public wanted to give us any feedback, it would be between March 1st and March 15th?
Yeah, it's a quick turnaround.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
The point of all of these forums and the visioning group is that we're getting the public-
Right, right. No, I know. I just wanted to-
Yeah. Honestly, we thought we had another two weeks. And when we actually sat down and worked out the schedule and backed everything out, you know, getting a draft March 1st is going to be hugely challenging, because as you can see where our, the forums end, there's not much time there.
But I would just say that I'm operating on the premise that, you know, our representatives are the voice of the people, so to speak, in these meetings for the HS visioning process.
No, absolutely. But I also think that sometimes when something's actually in writing-
Yes.
People have different thoughts, maybe, than they might have had during that process. So, it's just helpful to know the timing of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who do the, if there's changes or questions or something between March 1st and March 15th, who addresses that? Is it the administration? Is it the high school? Is it, who is?
It's the administration. Pretty much the people who are gonna be writing this plan are going to be Mr. McCarthy, myself, and Dr. Jangar, with, you know, all of the input that we've had from all these different groups, as well as, you know, our architects certainly, and David Stephen, who has been doing the facilitation. They're all gonna be part of it, but ultimately, the writing is up to the school to do.
On the building committee side, some dates to keep in mind, I don't know if I had the right dates in my head, but there'll be, in early April, there is a discussion at a, you know, public meeting about the various options that we have to prevent, present to the district, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. What it would take to get the whole building up to code, renovation, and then building a brand-new building. And then, later in April, the building committee takes a vote on which option is our preferred option, and then we present that to the MSBA. And so, that's a building committee decision by regulation. And so, just to keep that in mind as well.
Will we have sort of numbers around that time?
Yeah, we'll have numbers from, we should, we should have numbers, yeah. So, that's what's coming up. It's gonna, it's a very, it's a, there's a lot going on over the next eight weeks with this project. Eight to 12 weeks, yeah.
Just something for the building committee to consider. I know that in Belmont, to help smooth the process, they had several joint meetings of the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the building committee. Even though the Board of Selectmen has no official role, just to get everybody on board, so that's something to consider.
Okay. We could, we could do that for, we could do that for the, okay, okay. Thank you. That's a good idea. Okay.
All right. The other is that we have closed out Stratton, though. I'm gonna let, probably put him on the spot. Mr. Genizio went to the closeout, and you might want to just report where we are with all of that.
So, we had quite a few people at the closeout meeting, the contractor, OPM, architect, building facility staff, the principal, a teacher who was his right-hand during the project. And we went over, you know, what's left of, not really punchless, but cleanup stuff. So, we have a good list. We have a plan in place to, nothing major. Some things that we'll have to go back to the building committee to talk about, you know, if it's a change that the building committee is willing to undertake. But, you know, cold rooms, things like that, that they're just chasing down, finalizing that with any building project. But they're much ahead of it in the closeout meetings. Usually, you have one official like that, and then kind of one at the very end, when everything is checked off the list, and you can finally release last payments, so.
All right. I just want to also mention where we are with the searches for the Odison middle school principal and also for Hardy. We, last night, we had a parent forum, and I thank all of the parents that came out and gave feedback. So, we are now at the stage in the process where, in additions to more reference checking, we will be doing site visits over the next two weeks with the goal of having a decision before the February break. With respect to Hardy, we are now just at the interview stage. And that will conclude before the April- will conclude before the April, the February vacation. We probably will not do the site visits until after vacation. And then that process will, will involve also a parent evening, which you're welcome to come, and thank you to the members of the committee that came last night. Very appreciative that you were there. And sort of the same process will occur when we get into, we do the Hardy visits. So my, my estimate would be at the earliest mid, mid-March that a decision will be made. But roughly, that's the timeframe. All right. So I think that I have covered many things.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions? Paul.
It was a great night at the, the parent forum last night for the Addison principal. I just wanna mention something on the side, is that sitting at one of the tables behind the main area, when I came in, was one of our Addison teachers, who's also a, a, a community resident in the district, and I'm looking at what she's doing. I didn't know she was an Addison teacher. I thought maybe she's a college professor, 'cause she was doing this, looking at papers on this physics project with an impressive title. And it turns out, they're doing some really great science stuff at the Addison. You know, those little pleasant surprises you reach going through schools. It, it was just impressive. I wanted to make mention that they're, they're doing really formal presentations on balloon-based vehicles that they're propelling and measuring and theorizing and hypothesizing.
That's great.
Good to hear. Thank you.
I will pass it on. So, Mr. Schlickman, Dr. Seuss, and Mr. Carden all came last night, which was, which was terrific. Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda. We really only have one thing now. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the, the committee still requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 18143 dated 1/11/18, in the amount of $871,877.90.
So moved.
Motion second. Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no, and the ayes have it unanimously. Okay. Committee reports. Budget.
So, budget has two meetings coming up. We're going to meet on March, I'm sorry, February 1st at 6:00, and again on the 15th at 6:00. And we will be talking about the budget coming, and then the budget being under discussion.
Thank you.
And we've got outreach also. Mr. Carden, you wanna talk about how things went with your...
Sure, sure. So I presented at the Dallin PTO meeting. I had done this last year. It was a little bit different, I think, of an audience, I think, because it was, last year was promoted as a budget forum, followed by a PTO meeting, and this was just somebody coming from the School Committee to talk about the budget during the PTO meeting. So it's just sort of the PTO regulars. And I think they were a little bit bored by the level of detail. But anyways, they, you know, they didn't have a whole lot to say. They appreciate the investments we're making, that we've made. They appreciate the investments that the town is making in the Gibbs, especially going to five clusters, was very much appreciated. You know, they asked about how we compare, they did ask about how we compare to other districts. Maybe we should put that chart back in. They asked about special education spending, they always ask about that. So, not a lot of, you know, it, it, the audience for the kindergarten DAs was not there, so it was a different crowd.
Well, we'll have more outreach sessions like that. We're going to be sending a announcement out. I'm finalizing another date with another school, so I can send them all out as a batch. And I need to talk to you gentlemen afterwards about when there's one more to be scheduled. So, thank you.
Thank you. Committee relations, Cindy?
Nothing to report. No, no planned meetings.
Very good. Paul, District Accountability, Curriculum Instruction, and Assessment.
We met on January 16th. We had a discussion of presenting the superintendent's goals. Mr. Hayner discussed his desire to move the formative assessment to a point earlier in the year, which is really the domain of policy, some procedures. And Superintendent Bodie said she'd be comfortable with a January midpoint review of goals and evidence as opposed to March, because it's really sort, closer to the midpoint of the year. And there's no reason to postpone it. The reason why we postponed the final review is because we don't have all the summative data in June. The subcommittee discussed the possibility of adopt, adopting an alternative structured learning day program, which is a way to have learning in lieu of snow days. And she, Dr. Bodie said she discussed the idea with principals and will bring something forward to us in February, I believe, right?
February 8th.
February 8th. And so, yeah, it's February 8th, we're gonna present it February 8th meeting. And that, that's the discussion from CIAA.
Yeah, Jennifer, I have first.
Just a clarification. Is there going to be a proposal present, given to us on February 8th? Or is it just going to be a discussion? Okay. So there's gonna be a...
Be kind of clarification?
Yeah. The idea is to provide, present the committee with material beforehand for us to look at, to digest. The reason it's needed to have, for a vote, any dates, any snow days that you want this to take effect of, if we agree to, we have to happen after a vote. So the two days that we've already got have to be part of the five days at the end.
There's just a lot of different ways to structure it, so I just wanted to know, are we presenting a particular way to structure this, or is it just, let's talk about it?
Well, we could have a, we could have a CIA meeting ahead of time to go over some of the ideas. We could do that if we want to. Are currently, our situation, just, I'm just being practical here. We have, we are going through the third week of June. Our last day will be on a Wednesday. We're at 180 days. If we have two more snow days, we're gonna be going over the weekend. Several districts in the area are piloting this this year. I'm not saying we don't ever have any snow days, I'm just saying that this would be something that we could have as an alternative to potentially going into the last week, or what if we get the blizzard of 18? You know, I think it's, it'd be a good idea to have something in place that, that has a lot of integrity to it. We're not looking to have something that is, is not gonna be a good, good learning experience. It doesn't mean that the actual work is done on the snow day. It can be done over a period of time. It's, it's equivalency is, is the issue. And in fact, our interim commissioner wrote about this in his newsletter, that this says the blessing of Department of Education, because it, keep in mind, one of the things that we've been talking about is the future of education, is the idea of blended learning, project learning. And if you are going to be thinking out of the box in terms of where learning is, it would be rather restrictive to say that it could only occur when they're in the building. And so, it's sort of a consistency in terms of what you're looking to for the future. I'm not saying that, you know, we're gonna, you know, we may never do it this year, but I'd like to get some, something in place, just in case we did need to do it. And I think this is something we refine over time, so.
Yeah.
So my, so my concern is just that if we do a policy change, that it'd be as a result of sort of a very thoughtful, considerate discussion. That's, that's...
As I, as I understand this, is one of the things you have to do is have a School
Committee vote to notify the Department of Education that we intend to do this, and we have something in place. So that I, I'd be very comfortable, after the discussion we've had in the subcommittee meeting, by implementing, by stating that we're going to go do this, and having a, a first-year preliminary trial ready to go if we need it, so that we can use it this year if we need to, and then we can come back and revisit it for next year. Particularly if we use it and we get feedback on it, we can...
Right.
...tweak our view. However, as a School Committee, you know, we, we have to have an eye on standards, making sure this is valid learning time. But we should really leave to the professionals out there in the building level what the actual activities are and what the content is, as long as we're assured that it is the equivalent of a good day's worth of learning.
Yeah, I don't know if to, it has to be enshrined, well, maybe it needs to be enshrined in policy, so we can, I think we can figure that out after we take a vote, we can, it's, it'll be as...
My only concern was that we just not do a policy change too quickly. So, right, you know, at the point when we are going to...
Well, if the vote says reduce it in a preliminary way, then later on, we can make it public.
The, the Commissioner's report referred to policy changes.
Kirsty, go ahead.
Is this a negotiations issue?
Well, something, yes. It is something we've been talking about, yes.
Okay. So we'll need to have that information.
It's really getting the ball rolling on this. There's, there's so many different parts to it. You point that out quite correctly. We've been talking about it.
And then also, as you formulate plans, whether they're temporary or whatever, can we also be looking at what the evaluation procedure will be to, to assess if we're happy with what we did, if it did what we want? I'd like to see that as part of the package, not just as an afterthought.
Yeah. I would also like to make sure we get all the steps.
I think, I think it's important to get, be well informed before we do it, but let's also realize, we do not evaluate every curriculum item. So we gotta be, how much we're gonna drill down in this? That's all I'm saying. We need to be informed, and I agree with that. And the, did you already send us something on this?
Did.
Yeah, okay. That's the beginning part, and there's a lot out there right now in other schools. Several schools are doing it. One school has decided not to continue doing it. So if you get a chance to Google and read it, it's interesting material.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. By the way, just, you know, we, we figured out, I guess I was the one that didn't quite remember this, but when we approved the superintendent's goals, we put in all the, all the evidence we wanted. So it's already in, it's already done. Okay. Facilities report.
Oh, sorry. Nothing at this time. Sorry.
Very good. Policies and procedures, Len?
We had a meeting, we were planning, tentative, we were planning for the 30th, January 30th, but that has to be rescheduled. So we'll try to figure out a date to do that. We're gonna continue with the policy rewrite. I don't think there's any pressing policy issues in front of us, unless I'm missing something. So, you know, there's a lot going on with the high school and with the negotiations and all that. So we'll try to get a meeting scheduled, but probably won't be before our next meeting here.
Are you, are you guys gonna be bringing something before, to the, before us for changes? After, like, when will the process?
Yeah, I mean, I, we haven't talked about that. My sense would be after we get through a chunk of it, we would bring it before you.
Or first and second, right?
Rather than doing the entire policy book at once.
Okay. Paul?
One of the issues is, is that if we change a policy in, say, Area C, and it has a, an impact on F, you really need to do C and F before you bring the package back together.
Okay.
So it might be something we wanna do with, I, I think the way I felt it, that if we have something really pressing that needs to change, we'd bring it immediately, but if it's just procedural language changes, revisions, reorganization, we take those things at the end of the process.
Kirsty?
I would just wonder if we'd wanna bring it at the, and before we switch roles in April. So when, I don't know when the town election is, but I imagine you do.
April 7th.
So that would mean March 29th meeting, potentially. Or actually, we'd need them two weeks, two weeks before for a first read.
15th, yeah.
Yeah. Just a thought.
It doesn't have to, yeah, it doesn't have to be that way, but it could be good. Okay, School and Movement Task Force, there's no report. Legal Services.
Nothing at this time.
And Arlington High School Building Committee, we just talked about it. Gibbs Committee.
Nothing.
Liaisons, Bill?
I went to the Edco meeting the other day. Representative from Masbo Business Organization was also a School Committee member. She had with us about financial offices in the district, now part of a school program that's certified and evaluated, similar within the school process. Very interesting discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Announcements, any announcements, Bill?
10 days from now, on February 3rd at 11:15, I will be running into the ocean like a fool for, to raise money for Polio. Hopefully, I will make it to the next School Committee meeting.
Let's hope so, Bill. Be careful out there. Any future agenda items, Bill? Paul?
Yeah, no, we, there, there's a lot of controversy around the proposed GIC changes that were made in a meeting that apparently violated the open meeting law, so they probably have to reconsider it. And given the ripple effect in the community, who knows what's gonna happen, but I think it's something we should have on our agenda and be thoughtful about it, because, you know, one of the things we wanna do as School Committee people is protect the benefits of our, of our profession, of our staff. Yeah.
The GIC has announced a new meeting.
Yeah, they're, they're announcing a new meeting to revote it.
Yeah.
Or revote something, because the Attorney General said, "Wait a minute, you know, that's..."
You didn't tell anybody.
An open meeting law violation, we're gonna, if you don't revote it, we're gonna avoid the vote anyway. Because, you know, anyone at this table knows that an agenda item has to reasonably explain what might transpire at the meeting. And by looking at the vague item of taking a vote on determinations, or whatever the vague language was, nobody could anticipate what might have been happening at that meeting. So clearly, that was an open meeting law violation.
Okay. I mean, I guess in the next, if it, if it impacts the budget, John can report on it at the next meeting.
I, whether it impacts the budget or impacts our employees, I, I...
Right, either, either way.
We need to, we, we need to maintain health benefits of a proper level for our employees. I don't want them worrying about that. I want them worrying about kids, not health benefits.
Very good. All right. Anything else? Thank you, Paul.